Good evening, everyone. This is the last of our work sessions with our service level conversations. And this evening, our city manager will make some remarks and introduce the service areas that we're going to be addressing this evening. And to our residents, you have, in the last few months, taken a look at what we do here at Burnsville City Hall to deliver services to all of you from each of the different departments. Our city manager, Greg Lindberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, this is our fourth meeting now with service conversations with each of our department. Just by way of a reminder, primarily for the community, these conversations are designed, really, to dive into the details of our operations, how we deliver service to the community, tied with the conversations that we've been having about our organizational analysis and our 2023 budget process. So this evening brings us to our fourth and final meeting. We have three departments tonight who will be talking with you: Human Resources, the City Clerk's Office, and Community Development. So, again, as I've said in previous meetings, I really appreciate the time that each of our department directors and their managers and teams have put in to preparing for these conversations and really trying to best reflect the service that they're providing to the community and along the way answer your questions, educate you alongside the community with the work that we do day in and day out for Burnsville. With that, a couple of reminders. First would be that after this discussion tonight, the leadership team will take a look at a final draft of the complete inventory of services that we deliver to the city. That inventory will be delivered in a report to you that kind of is a capstone of these conversations as part of the budget process. I anticipate that you'll see that sometime -- Bethany's looking at me, she's wondering when I'm going to say sometime -- you should expect it sometime middle of September. So the leadership team will be talking more about that tomorrow as we debrief these conversations and prepare to get that to you. Also, the community can follow along with our budget conversation and each of these service conversations at burnsvillemn.gov/budget. The budget page has kind of a timeline of each of these conversations woven together with each of your budget conversations, including our comprehensive discussions on the organizational analysis. So it's all there, laid out with links to the slide decks you'll see tonight, as well as videos to each of these meetings, so trying to make it as easy as possible alongside our budget transparency portal, kind of the real-time ability for folks to get in and dive into our budget. This Friday, I'll send you a note on this as well, but just in terms of budget process moving forward, I expect that our draft budget book will be available to you sometime in the first week in November with a future goal to get us kind of more in line with a pattern of that budget book being available to you at the time of max tax. With this year's budget process, we've had kind of an iterative experience over the course of the past several months, and staff needs a little bit more time this year to prepare that. So just by way of timing, a good reminder there. Again, all of that will be available online at burnsvillemn.gov/budget. And Carissa walked into the room just when I didn't screw up that that's slash budget, not backslash budget, which is apparently a bad habit that I have. With that, I believe that Human Resources is going to kick our evening off, so I'll turn it over to Carissa Rothamian.
Good evening, Carissa, and welcome to you and your team.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm excited to talk to you a little bit tonight about the services that the HR Department provides and really kind of boast about some really cool things that we're doing. So just agenda for this evening, going to kind of talk a little bit about who we are, show you our org chart, who else within the department, talk about how our service delivery has changed. And this might sound a little familiar to you. In March, if you remember, we were talking about the HR strategic plan and talking about our goals and our strategy moving forward. So this is another great opportunity for me to share with you what we're doing and what we're proud of and how we're moving forward as a department. And then lastly, how our services align with the strategic priorities. So who are we? We really consider ourselves the care team for our employees. We take care of our employees, so our employees can focus on taking care of the community. We're really proud of that. So looking at what we do for our employees, whether we're bringing them onboard, making a great recruiting or onboarding experience, supporting them throughout their life cycle here as an employee, helping grow them, develop them, help them be their best so that they can be the best out there in our community. And then just, you know, providing financial and well-being support for them, too. Are we providing them fair and competitive wages? Are we providing them with a good comprehensive total rewards package? Are we providing them with opportunities for well-being in and outside of the workplace for whatever needs they may have? So who are we? Here's our org chart. You can see the department is comprised, you'll see five FTEs on there. We have one temporary staff currently, so if you're counting the heads, that is six on there. We have myself, we have an Assistant HR Director, we have a Payroll and Benefits Coordinator and an HR Partner. And then Organizational Development is under the HR umbrella, and we have our Organizational Development and Strategic Initiatives Manager. And then we also have our Temporary Staff, which is an Organizational Development Consultant. That Organizational Development Consultant is critical to the continued success and, you know, movement forward of our organizational development initiatives, helping move us towards an employer of choice, and is in the 2023 City Managers' Proposed Budget. When you think of Human Resources, I kind of like to put it out into three different categories. Human Resources, when you think of recruiting policies, procedures, creating HR, the HR team is working on creating best-in-class, best practices, leading-edge policies, something like looking at remote work or flexible work, you know, working with our employees to make them feel like they have opportunities, if it works with their department, to have more flexibility, to lean towards that employer of choice. Organizational Development, making sure our employees really have the tools and resources to be their best. So the implementation of Burnsville University has been huge for us as an organization, really giving employees and people managers the tools to do their job and to do it well, to understand their strengths and leverage that to be the best that they can be in whatever service they're providing to our community. And then Total Rewards, again, making sure we're taking care of our staff members, looking at them from a financial standpoint and then a well-being standpoint, so compensation package, insurance, well-being, leave, so the whole total rewards package, right, sick vacation leave. Some of the things that you might not necessarily think about from the HR team that we do do on a fairly regular basis, employee appreciation events. So we help lead and direct employee-led events, employee appreciation. That's part of the HR team and we're in the background of that, well-being. We have a very comprehensive wellness committee and well-being package, so working with employees through various vendors to make sure that they have the resources that they need to help them throughout any phase of their life, whether it's inside or outside of work. Inclusion and Belonging. We have an Inclusion and Belonging Committee, and we work with our team to make sure our employees feel valued, that they feel connected to their job, and they feel like they belong here and they're a part of the organization and a part of the community. And then People, something that you might not know, since we're the care team for all of our employees, we're caring for that 75% of that general fund budget, right? Our employees are 75% of our budget. We're providing all the care and support for that percentage of the budget, so for all of our employees. So it's a pretty big undertaking that we have on our hands, and we're happy to do Something we're really proud of, so Organizational Development. This is new to the department as of recently. In 2020, we brought Organizational Development onboard. Historically, there was a blip in time where we had Organizational Development and Human Resources years ago, brought it back, and we're doing some really great things with it. So in 2020, brought Organizational Development back onboard in the HR Department, and since then, we've done amazing things. So we've created Burnsville University, a training, a growth and development platform for all of our employees and our people managers. And since 2020 to now, reading because that's a little fine print for me, we've been able to train all managers in strengths, all managers and employees in strengths. We've been able to facilitate strengths conversations in all of our work teams, and we've been able to provide individual strengths coaching to all of our people managers as well, so helping them really facilitate and grow their teams and develop their teams so that they can be the best that they can be. And just some fun facts for you, just this year alone, within Burnsville University, we've had 55 classes, 65 individual coaching sessions, and over 1,000 hours of professional development. So we've made huge progress within just the organizational support, the training and development of our employees, and it's something that we're really proud of. Slide might look familiar to you when we were talking about the HR strategic plan, so this is just a snapshot, again, of our HR department in comparison to our Market City counterparts. So you can see, we are operating with three staff, so we're operating with less staff and we're doing a lot more. We have one payroll staff, not all HR departments have payroll. Payroll historically has con in and outside of the HR department. At present, payroll is under the HR department. And then something we're extremely proud of, Organizational Development. We are the only agency that has dedicated resources, FTE, to organizational development, and I think it shows through Burnsville University and some of the culture changes we're seeing and the support that our employees and people managers are experiencing. Strategic Priorities, so just tying what we do back to the council's strategic priorities, right, helping us become that employer of choice, being on the leading edge when it comes to policies, and creating a work environment where we can attract and retain our staff to create a consistency for our community and best service for our community, because the longer we have staff here, the more they're familiar with our organization, familiar with our community, and can best serve them. So Safety, we have very comprehensive wellness and safety programs to make sure our employees are at their best in and outside of the workplace, and they have a safe workplace and they have resources to be safe. Community Engagement, figuring out how we can do community-based recruiting. We want to bring our community members into our organization, and then we want to keep them here. So how can we make sure that we are that employer of choice, that employer that community members want to come to and they want to stay working with us? Organizational Culture, this is kind of where BU shines, right? So creating that work environment where employees have the tools and resources to do their job, where they feel like they belong, they feel like they're heard, and they have the resources to be their best. They know how to be their best and provide the best service that they possibly can for our community. And then, of course, working towards employee engagement, that's also under the Organizational Development umbrella, making sure we're doing all we can to engage employees, retain them. And again, back to that organizational culture and workplace culture, really important to make sure we're doing all we can to create an environment where employees feel actively engaged, because actively engaged employees are going to provide better service for our community, and they're going to stay here longer because they feel engaged with the organization and with the community. Community Vibrancy, so using a strengths-based, cultural competence approach to wave that out into our community, to make sure we can represent that not only into the organization but then externally as well. And then aligning our values through leading-edge policies and procedures, again, making sure that what we're doing here is supporting our staff so that they feel like they have everything that they need, so they can go out into the community and be all the best that they can be. Infrastructure, looking at how do we provide the tools and resources that our employees need as efficiently and as effectively as we can? So think about payroll system, HRAS systems, access that employees have at their fingertips when they need it for any type of information that they need. And then Sustainability, making sure we're being good financial stewards, right? So a good example is an organizational analysis. Are we doing things as efficiently and as effectively as we can? Do we leverage technology? Do we have employees in the right spot? Are we configured appropriately so that we can create synergies between departments? It's really making sure that we're looking at what we're doing and making sure we're doing it well and the best that we can, knowing that, you know, FTEs are expensive, and we want to make sure that we're using our staff and having the appropriate number of staff and then creating the appropriate number of resources beyond that, so we can use technology differently, can we leverage different departments and build synergies F1 another if we, you know, work together in certain areas? And then what is important to us? It's important to us that every member of our community feels welcomed. We want to make sure every employee feels like they're a part of the organization, that they feel like they belong here, that they feel like we're here to support them, and that they feel like we're a value to them. So we, as an HR team, provide value to them, we're a good consultant, we're a good partner, we're a good resource for them, so that they can do their jobs as efficiently and as effectively as possible, and they have the support from us that they need. Challenges, it's a tight labor market, it's tough out there, so trying to find the best candidates for the city of Burnsville, and then knowing it's a tight labor market, it's competitive out there, too. So employees and prospective employees are looking at the organization as a whole, so not only just what is the compensation, but what does the organization do for the employees? How are the employees engaged at Burnsville? How do they feel? Do they want to stay there? How are we retaining our staff? That's all really important to us as we move forward in the labor market and recruiting employees and retaining employees to stay here. Looking at staff resources for recruiting and creating, you know, strategies to make sure that we're doing everything we can to recruit and attract. So those strategies might be leading-edge policies, right? Or again, really focusing like we are on our workplace culture and our employee engagement, all those things matter. And then just looking at the compensation that we're providing. As you're aware, we did a compensation study a while back, that was a challenge. We were behind in the market, so making sure that we're at market and we're competitive to retain and attract staff again. And then lastly, another challenge, we're a small team, so when we want to roll out our strategic initiatives and work on our strategic plan, we don't always have as much time as we want for it. We don't always have as much time as we want to provide our people managers and our employees' support. So that's another struggle for us at present, is making sure that we have the time to do all the things that we want to do and provide the support that we want to provide. Operations, we want to be a trusted partner, focusing on employee and people management. We want to develop our employees and teams to be their best. We want to create clear processes and procedures and have them rooted in best practices. This might sound a little familiar based on the HR strategic plan here. And then we want to continue to enhance our services and efficiency through advancing technology, right? So how can we do things more efficiently, more effectively? And again, how can we create access to our employees as easy, as intuitive, and as user-friendly Human Resources, as I mentioned, the current department FTE is five. In doing the organizational analysis, the recommendation for the HR department was eight FTE. Notable, in 2006, we had, oh, sorry, I can't read the fine print again. I think we were down three staff, yes, we're down three FTE from 2006. So the department's gone quite a few years with, you know, less staff than anticipated, and our services have not dropped since, we've actually added services on. So it's been a little difficult to continue to make sure we're providing as best services we can, and as we continue to talk about improving our service and continuing to be that valued partner, looking for additional staff to make sure we can provide that great service to our employees. And then, of course, when we look at increasing head counts in other departments, we're the team that's doing the recruiting, the onboarding, and we care through the entire employee's lifecycle for those staff members. So as we continue to look at potentially adding FTEs, being cognizant of the fact that HR is the department that that all runs through, and we work hard to make sure we recruit, attract, and retain them throughout their life cycle here. And that's what I have, that's the HR department.
Any comments or questions for Carissa?
We do, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you've accomplished a great deal with the number of employees that you have, and you talked about your challenges and that you don't have the time. So part of that, I see, is the lack of resources to accomplish the tasks that we need to do. And you're right, anytime any other department increases their employee count, it affects you, so it's like a domino, because you now have to address all of the issues with all of those employees and then to train them and to make sure that they have the resources and the training and the improvements that they need to do their jobs well. So, and looking at the market analysis, it was also very interesting. Do other organizations have the same practices that we have here with regard to Burnsville University and the work that we do to improve and to support our employees?
They do not. We are on the leading edge, we are the only agency that's doing that, so it's something that we're extremely proud of right now, because we're the only one. And I have agencies asking me, hey, did you do a training on this? What did your organizational development manager do on this? Can we see a copy of that resource? They're asking about our trainings, they're asking about what we're doing, they're talking about our employee engagement initiatives, they're asking questions on it. It's creating buzz within the community, so it's something we're extremely proud of.
So this market analysis is really not an apples-to-apples comparison?
That's correct, Mayor.
Correct.
So when I'm looking at this, it's really not a good comparison, because I know I have talked about our Burnsville University to other colleagues, other mayors, and they don't know anything about that in their organization. That's why I'm asking the questions, and that's why when I look at this market analysis, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Yep, very true.
Good work, yeah, and thank you to your whole team and the work that you're doing. Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much, Carissa, and please extend our gratitude to the rest of your team that's not present here this evening.
I will, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carissa.
Thank you.
Okay. The next department is Community Development.
Madam Mayor, that's almost a pop quiz for me, because I don't know the answer, but I am getting nods of the head that is correct.
Because it's the way Bethany gave me...
I know you like it, same as the agenda.
It's well done.
Okay, so Regina, are you the one that's going to be presenting for Community Development?
Madam Mayor, I'll start with Fire Chief Johnson, and then we will get into the department's presentation.
Okay. Fire Chief.
Thank you, I'll wait for the slide deck to come up here.
Who's in charge of your slide deck?
We'll get that for you in just a second, BJ, if you could provide some sort of...
Michelle's going to drive, is Michelle driving?
Some sort of humor, some sort of interim entertainment, we'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm really good at that.
There's nothing bunt cakes on the table.
Burning food when they cook and accidentally burning food.
Right, we're good. All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. Fortunate to be joined by the Community Development Leadership Team here with Regina, Chris, and Chris, so you'll hear from all of us as we kind of go through this presentation. Given my interim role of this, I thought it was important that you hear directly from them and what's going on, what they're excited about, and what their challenges are. So that's really kind of what the agenda is here. As far as who we are, a total of 20 FTEs. We have nine in the Building Inspections Department, so Building Inspections includes things like electrical, mechanical, plumbing, all the permits, kind of all those trades, right? Planning Economic Development around land use, we have five FTEs. Our Code Enforcement and Rental Licensing Division has five FTEs, and then there's a Director of the Department, which adds up to the total of 20 FTEs. I'll turn it over to our Building Official, Chris Vasti, for the next couple of slides here.
Community Development is a place for businesses, homeowners, and design professionals to come and start in their development process or building process within our city. So we have partnered with our stakeholders even before the design development stage, when they're just questioning, hey, we would like to take a look at this building or this place or this land... place or this land for this use. We come alongside them and start the process through our Development Review Committee and also before that, just face-to-face. Overlook is a great example. There was quite a few issues that came up with our infrastructure, our assets within the property of our, how we're going to deal with our storm and our sewers. And we're able to solve some of those problems before the design was fully incomplete. Met with our, the City Engineer, Plans Examiner, planners, and made sure that we're on track for the build.
And if I can just add in, I think that's a differentiator. Not all cities do that. Our staff's willing to meet with folks when they're looking at designing something. So we don't say, well, you have to have an application and you have to have a permit before we'll meet with you. And they grab all the stakeholders. I see Jen, our City Engineer, sitting over there. And Chris was talking about Outlook, the perfect example where there was infrastructure challenges and engineering, planning, code were all involved well before anything was on paper from an architect. So I think that's an important differentiator where we come alongside a developer, a landowner, a business owner, to help them understand what's required so that they don't get surprised by those things, right? It's a lot easier to deal with those before you put anything on paper rather than, hey, we've spent all this time designing all this and now I got to go back and rework it. So kudos to the group on coming alongside folks and really helping them.
And here with Community Development Services, one of the things that we do here is we partner with the Chamber and the program Grow Minnesota. There's 21 businesses that we visit with them per year. And we go out and take a look at how they're doing their operations and listen to their struggles and their successes and see how we can have an opportunity to come alongside them as a city. We also take an education before enforcement approach on how we handle all elements, whether somebody's building without a permit or something is going on, maybe some mistakes made in the construction. We always try to educate first and solve the problem upfront. And we're always trying to find resources for these individuals, whether it's within our city or at the state level or other municipalities. We'll go at an international level even just to try to help them along their way. Our customer service, we have an online permit system that's been for tracking in the past. Now we have one where it's transparent to the public, where they can go in, they can take a look at what permits are on the property, what the resulting has been on the property. And it's a very good interaction. Also a quick development time with our Planning Department and Planning Commission and Council approvals. We can have a 60 to 90 day schedule. Other cities I see at 120. And so this is a big benefit. We usually get some good comments on that. And nine out of 10 times, it's on consent and it gets approved as we go through.
All right, we'll turn to Regina for a couple of slides.
Good evening. Mayor members of the commission, yes, I do have the next slide. So I just want to highlight a couple of the items that we're charged with in Planning and Economic Development, Code Enforcement, and Building. Not going to read all of those bullet points, it sure is a lot, but it's just a snapshot of many of the responsibilities that we have. And many of those responsibilities are regulatory in nature or required since we're a statutory city. A couple of the highlights in Planning and Economic Development, we provide development review for our processes. And that, like Fasti said, Chris Fasti said, it happened, our customer service happens from the time we get that phone call. We begin the research on people looking for sites to build in Burnsville. And we're having those interactions before they make application and really through the whole process, from that time they make application till the time it goes in front of Planning Commission and Council and then in for building permit, if it makes it to building permit. Sometimes that doesn't happen, but when it does, we're still alongside reviewing those plans and then doing that final landscape inspection 18 months later after the building's built. So we're really working with property owners and developers for longer than that time that they make application to the time they see we're working before and after the process. We also strengthen and work with our relationships with our businesses through our Business Retention and Expansion Program. That's something that we've really taken more focus on in the last couple of years and something we're really proud on, on building those stronger relationships. With our building inspections, again, like was mentioned before, we do a lot of those project pre-meetings. And oftentimes, if a site doesn't work, whether it's for a tenant improvement or new construction redevelopment, we're redirecting people to other sites where it may work within the community. So we're, I'd say, problem solvers and providing the best customer service that we can to our community. A unique thing that we do in Burnsville is we host homeowners workshops, educating our residents that are your weekend warriors. And I'm really excited about the community engagement vehicle that we have that was just showcased today. I could picture us going out in the community and hosting a kind of a road show, a weekend warrior road show out in a community. It's really exciting to put some of those new tools to use. In Code Enforcement, of course, we have our rental licensing and inspections. And I think we've brought, what, over 1,000 new units in just the past couple of years. And we've got our Housing and Energy Programs that are unique to Burnsville with our Code Cash Program to help before it gets to any enforcement action, to help our homeowners fix problems before it gets to any type of compliance issues. So we're there to help people out and give people the tools that they need to make their home safe and to make our community a better place. And then we have our Housing/Energy Assessment Program, so, or I shouldn't say assessment, Audit Program, so that people can learn about their opportunities for saving energy in their homes and making their, you know, cutting down on their energy bills and also adding to sustainability of just Burnsville in general. Our impact. So I think this slide, again, a lot of bullet points here, but I think it's a great example of how our departments work well together, but also collaboratively outside the organization as well. And we all have a common goal to serve the community and keep people safe. All of our departments, I'd say, have touched, have touched, I guess, all of our, let me step back, all of our new apartments that we have in Burnsville have touched all of our areas, from hosting neighborhood meetings before the project comes to the Planning Commission and Council, to working with developers collaboratively internally with staff and with our external partners like the Department of Natural Resources and Minnesota Department of Transportation, to the actual construction of the building and the inspections that are completed throughout the project, to the rental inspections that happen, and then the ongoing service to those new residents that we have and connecting them with programs and connecting them with other departments in the city once they're here. So just one little snapshot and one little example that actually is pretty impactful. Another thing I'd want to touch on is we've been very successful in obtaining grants, not only from different agencies and different organizations like the Metropolitan Council and Department of Employment and Economic Development, but we are also lucky enough to, with the council's blessing, have over $2 million to work with our businesses to provide much-needed resources during COVID. And that could not have happened without the council. And at the same time, it took a lot of resources to manage that program. And it takes time. It takes staff to, once we're successful or once we have that availability of funding, it does take time to make sure that we're checking all the boxes for the grant requirements and doing our reporting correctly and monitoring and ongoing monitoring for really years to come. And that's something we've taken on and we've seen great results. But it does take time and people to manage that. Service delivery, evolution. So again, we've seen a significant increase in our rental properties, not only with our new apartments, but also within our single-family neighborhoods. And I think Chris Forsen will speak to that a little later in greater depth. We've also had a great focus in priority areas, including heart of the city and the center of village. And we've taken a more proactive approach to economic development, connecting developers to economic development tools like tax increment financing grants, those public-private partnerships, and special legislation within the center of village. That all took extra time and effort and it will be great success, but it took a number of us collaboratively working, not only inside the organization, but outside the organization. And another thing with our Building Department, we have state delegation authority, which allows our Building and Fire Departments to keep plan review and inspections local. An example of that is our electrical inspections. We do that in-house, where many other cities work through the state to get that done. And that means better customer service for the city of Burnsville and for our residents and more effective. And we always hear from developers, time is money. And whether it's for a commercial project or you're a resident trying to get your porch done for your, or your deck done with your lighting for your son or daughter's graduation party, it really means something. And so we're lucky to have that here and be able to be responsive to our community. So I'm going to talk about Planning and Economic Development, then we'll transition to the other departments as well. I was thinking I should put up a slide that shows the various permits, zoning permits and sign permits and development review applications. But that would show that we're pretty steady as far as the number of applications we see. But what that doesn't show is all the different type of work that we've taken on in the past few years, starting with the Center Village Vision and the Economic Development Strategic Plan. We have our Integrated Marketing and Communication Plan and our Heart of the City Design Framework, which we partnered on with our Engineering Department. All of those have implementation strategies and goals and are great to keep us focused, but also take time to work through and implement. I touched on some of the grants that we were successful in obtaining with the CARES Business Grant, our Business Retention and Expansion Program. That's been your partnership with the Chamber. And then we also have a separate program that we run on our own, working with our culturally diverse businesses. And we have a goal of meeting with a minimum of 12 businesses each year and highlighting their successes in our Opportunity Belongs Here newsletter and our Burnsville Bulletin and other sources as well. And we have all the new apartments and new apartments that are on the horizon, as well as new maps that I just love to highlight. We have our development map that showcases our projects from development application through the approval process to construction and completion. Last I heard, I believe it's either the first or second amount of hits on our website as far as maps. So people are looking at it. Our residents are following along to see, you know, what's going on in my neighborhood. And the press picks up the information too and other developers. So it's a great tool, not only for communicating what's going on in the city, but also highlighting the efforts and the work that is going on. And then we have our commercial property map, which we highlight properties that are for sale or for lease. And we pull data from different sources, as well as land that we have for sale in the city, and highlight a map as well that gets used and a great resource for our customers. Those maps take people to input the information and to display the information to make sure they're working right and working well. They're a great source to have. And then, of course, we've got our different ordinance amendments that we've done throughout the years, from the accessory dwelling unit changes that we made, and that went through a governance process, to our short-term rental governance that was completed and eventual ordinance changes, and our mixed-use amendments that we've done, and our transit-oriented development zoning ordinance. So we've seen changes as a result of those amendments, but these are newer initiatives and at the reaction of either the market or some of the implementation plans that we've Without turning it over to Chris Fasti.
With this chart here, the left darker green, that's a number of permits pulled. We're going back in time here to, I think, 2017. And year-to-date is our last chart, so we're really not down as much as it looks. We're doing quite well. And it represents, as you can see, the inspections and the number of permits line up pretty close per year. There is quite a bit of consulting that goes on besides that. And we have quite a few interactions per year. As you can see, most of the growth that you see in the last four years here, including this year, is large apartment buildings. They're very complex and take a great deal of study and time and research and inspections. We do them in phases, so you might get one permit, but you have maybe 100 inspections as opposed, or compared to a residential home. Like a new home would be, you might end up with 10 inspections for the building code end of it. We're experiencing redevelopment also for certain areas. We have some warehouses and a little bit of, like TJ Maxx and some of those stores moving from place to place or keeping them within the city, which is nice, but they require quite a bit of work and inspections for those. Are also just, one of the things that we do that we're proud of is our plan review time is on most residential. All residential is less than a week, but our commercial, our smaller projects are around a week to two weeks of time before we can turn around our plan review. That is equal to, or if not, way better than other cities. We're very efficient with that. We get our replies and response out immediately and then also just working with them from the beginning of the project, even before we get the permit. We already have enough interaction going on where they, that most of the customers know what is happening and they're in the know. And one of the things that we do struggle with is we have a lack of depth and we have certain certifications and certified individuals that need to do these delegated projects. And we have several different tiers of delegation. We have all of them in our city for hospitals, schools, licensed, other licensed facilities, which is great. There's been, right when I came... There's been, right when I came on, we didn't have that. And it was noticed and it was, it was shared with two council that they wanted that service back. And we're able to have plumbing, but I just have one person. So it's nice if we can go into depth there and have some backup in electrical and some of the building delegations. We have some good depth, but electrical and plumbing is where we really need some, some additional staff or. Our customer and employee interaction, interaction growth continue with our open gov system. As we go electronic, it's brought up many more questions. So once they have the knowledge, the citizens have more knowledge of what's happening out there with the inspections and our results, and they have more questions that go along with that. So it's, it's a positive thing. It's a great thing that they're coming to us. And we're having a more in-depth relations, relational experience with our customers, both the, with the contractor and the homeowner and, and the business owners as we come in. It's just a clearer way to communicate. And. Let's see, I think onto Mr. Forsland.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm going to just do a brief snapshot here of the rental licenses that we have currently out there. 2013, when the program first started, I find it hard to believe now it's already been 10 years. It seems like we just started it. We've seen approximately a 21% increase in the number of our rental licenses that are out there, rental units, I should say, under a rental license. It's interesting that we, we, we expect this trend to continue. The number that I estimated for 2023 is probably on the conservative side. It probably is a little bit more than that because we haven't opened up a few of the, the new construction units that, that we're expecting to have up. But the trends expect to continue. It's continuing all the way around the metro area right now. What makes Burnsville different in some respects with some of the neighboring cities is we have about 50% of our housing stock that's approaching 50 years or more in age. And we're seeing failures in a lot of their large capital items, whether it be fire suppression systems, elevator systems, a lot of life safety issues that we have serious concerns about and involved for all of our purposes. All of us, certainly fire and police as well, a lot of careful attention, attention to those life safety systems and the general maintenance of them. And we, we spend a lot of time dealing with this. And the expectation is, you know, buildings have a life cycle and as they age, they demand more attention, just like we all do too. We're seeing that trend with the, especially the multifamilies. We've also seen, you know, the, the single-family homes have tended to, been steadily climbing. I, I think this is kind of interesting, even through two years of COVID, that we've still seen this happen. But the, not the concern, but an observation would be that some of the ownership has been moving towards large property maintenance companies. These are being, becoming corporate versus the mom and pop type, single-family homes. They, they have a home up north or someplace, they want to rent it out. We're not seeing that anymore. We're having corporations buy up several large numbers of homes and working through a central agent. That's a shift that I think is noted and should be considered. Rented manufactured homes has stayed constant at 64 in the last 10 years. So that hasn't moved. But they're still out there. So. Somebody stepped on the cord?
It looks like a blue screen of depth, which actually is.
Device running into a problem and needs to restart.
Jen's here to, Jen's here to smile for him.
She's the rescue.
Jay is here.
An operating system error was caused by system memory.
You know, RAM is the most important part of the museum. I just would like to know how Chris Forsland and Chris Fasty got really large letters on their. You don't have high-def TV, these are really hard to read, but I'll bet they could read those two guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Is yours as flexible as mine?
I was going to say they printed them right before the.
That's the, that's. That's the reason.
They're all in capitals too.
Yeah. I just was, I could read it from over here and I bet they could read it at home, but you know Regina's a lot smaller. They're probably going, who's that person sitting between, they can't read her name.
Yeah. So. Yeah. For our audience, we just have some technical problems that we're trying to fix it this time.
It's a little side.
And what we'll do is we'll recess.
Can I ask a couple of questions while they're working on this?
Sure.
Otherwise they're going to get them later.
You, you can certainly do that, so we won't recess. Councilmember Gustafson, you have a question.
Gina, I had a question about code cash and how much is in that fund right now? Do you know offhand?
That's a good question offhand.
I think that's not something they have in terms of the delivery of function.
I believe it's around, I want to say 25,000.
25,000?
I believe that's what it is.
And how do we get the word out on that?
When we have a situation where we, we believe we have certain qualifications for code cash, you have to be, well, have a violation that's resolvable. And you're either a economically disadvantaged individual, you know, you don't have money or meet any of the three criteria that are on there, you can apply for it. Go online, fill it out, we'll review what your, what your project is. Let's say it's a roof repair, windows, and the city will cover 50% of that cost. They have to have, you know, the applicant has to have some skin in the game, so they, they have, or incur a 50% of cost on that as well. So it's.
So does a resident have to have an interaction with our inspections group to know about this? Or has, we, we found a way to get it out there for people that probably know they have some code violations, that they can contact us and say, hey?
We've got some real nice cards that we insert in there with a, what do you call it?
It's a QR code.
QR code.
I mean, when you, I mean, how does, how does that work? How do you, when do they get that card? What causes that card?
Inspector will hand it to them. So there, there is that interaction. We'll talk to people. It's one of these leading the horse to water, but you can't make them drink. And we've had a few applicants, two of which, you know, didn't apply, didn't qualify for it because they didn't read that they had, there was an income guideline on it.
So if you're, if you're in the neighborhood, you happen to see something that probably needs some attention, can you just put a card in the door for them or?
We could, but that's, if we see it, that kind of puts us in conflict.
That'll be proactive.
Yeah. We, we like, we have them out.
I'm just trying to figure out, how do, how do people know that we are doing this unless somebody complains about that person? That's what I'm getting at.
Councilmember Gustafson, I think the first requirement is they have to have a code violation, right?
Yeah.
So lots of times these things are routine maintenance issues that might not be, rise the level of a code violation. So that's why the inspector kind of preemptively giving it to them as they write them a violation is how it currently works.
And that comes about by complaint?
Usually by complaint, most of the time. Unless it's something life safety that we see, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, now you want to reassess.
Oh gee, thanks.
Councilmember Gustafson.
I was going to ask the question anyways, yes.
We also have information on our city website. We've launched, it's called the, under the homeworks program. It's one of the services that we offer and there is information on our website as well as, I think we may have done a page on our Burnsville in brief, I'm sorry, Burnsville Bulletin, sorry. Probably also the Burnsville in brief as well to let people know. You know, maybe it's not the person reading the information, but maybe they know of a neighbor or a family member that they can share that information with. So, and we'll, it's a new program. We'll try to think creatively on, on different ways that we can get the word out as well.
It might be a Carissa thing.
It's been discussed. I know we're trying to think through different ways to get it out there.
What's that?
It's been discussed. We, I know we've been trying to think of different ways to get it out there, but make sure that the information is properly saying who, who's, it applies to. Because we had a little bit of confusion at that, at first.
And when we do a code for cash, is there a limit to what we'll do with somebody or?
Yeah, there is.
You mean an upper limit?
Yeah.
I believe it was 5,000.
Up to $2,000 dollars.
Up to $2,000.
Yeah.
With a 50% match.
Thanks.
Okay. We're, we're back on. Okay. Okay. Thank you to all of the people who worked to get the technology fixed so that we're back on track. And back to you, Chris Forsland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, pleasure. What we have here is, I think it's, it's some interesting information that trends we've seen in complaints that we received. And initially, when we first started the program back in 2013, this wasn't anything in our database that we necessarily separated out. Starting in about 2015, we did break down all our complaints through a public complaint or what staff received and collected that information. And up to November 2019, the, that's, that's the point when we switched from the proactive program to complaint-based. So we started seeing a downward shift on the staff complaints that we received. Coupled with a local emergency being declared for COVID, that certainly had an impact on how we responded, how we communicated with people too and complaints that we get. Our focus at that point in time was strictly on the life safety issues that we were getting. And, and that was with limited staff during that time period. In September of 2020, we went with the open gov software program, which is a little bit difficult to query a lot of these things. So our, our, our data is kind of loose towards the lower end there, but what we have been able to determine is that we're starting to see an upward trend in, in the complaints. And what's, what's interesting is an increase in the severity. I mean, these aren't, the grass is eight inches now, the grass is two feet high. And that's a trend that we didn't see before. What it, what it also said is when we went to more of that reactionary shift, we were finding that it's also not only are the complaints perhaps increasing, or not only increasing severity, but more complex. And it's drawing more of our time to deal with them. We're, we're, instead of saying it, I'll give an example of sending a, just a single mowing crew out to do a vacant property, we're sending out a large tractor, a couple other things. It's, it's not the same as what, what we used to have. And they are taking more time to resolve. Part of that is because the slowdown in court system as well. So let's look at what community development does compared to other cities. For, for our purposes, cities base their needs based on their desired level, what their customers demand, their residents demand, and what their resources, resources are. For example, and I think we brought this up as a prior example, Edina and Eagan both do not do electrical inspections. They provide, the state provides that service. And, you know, I can give up both revenue and the service, but in Bloomington, Spring Lake Park do point-of-sale inspections. I mean, we've got different services that are offered traditionally through community development, community development. So say what one city compared to another is awkward because it's driven by the customer and what the expectations are for the community. One of the things that we look at, well, the organizational analysis looked at is staffing levels for community development staff have been relatively flat from 2006 to 2020 with the addition of the, our code enforcement group, which started a whole new service expectation level. So what the staffing report recommended was for additional staff, where, that will benefit all of our divisions and I think will help us continue providing the best customer service we can give. So what we're going to talk about now is some of the strategic priorities. Community development's work involves, revolves around those six priorities and to help maintain and develop vibrancy of the community. First one we want to talk about is safety. All three of us in our departments, our staff are involved in keeping people safe. This is what we live and breathe for. This is the thing we want to do best. And we're, we're proud of that and that we can do that. How do we do that? Well, we form a lot of partnerships. There's very few organizations in the city that we haven't worked with at one point in one way, shape or another. Not only in the city, outside the city, from the state level to the federal level, we're involved with them to try to make the best thing, we, the best community that we can in the safest environment that we can. We help ensure that communities and structures are safely built, healthy to occupy. And when people have concerns about that, we're a resource for them and we provide, to the best of our knowledge, that resources to help solve their problem. If we don't know, we'll find an answer. And I think we do that very well. We also ensure things like access to buildings, ADA requirements. We're obligated to stay on top of these rules and codes as they change and do our best to do that interpretation to keep people safe. Some of the other partners that we work with, that we may be familiar with, Dakota County, CDA, the Center for Energy and Environment, police fire from various cities, from the state, architects, building owners, contractors, many, many, many groups of people. We do this through our comprehensive plans, zoning codes, property maintenance code, building codes. So we have to be, well, I like to consider ourselves the caretakers of the community in some respects and we strive to do that. We want to protect the general welfare. Safety is one of our priorities.
Who has the next one?
All right. I guess I'm on this slide here. Education engagement when it comes to the community engagement. We love to educate, improve our outcomes, maintain safe buildings, make sure that we are looking at them from start to finish. And then once they are put into place and built and finished, that we maintain them properly. Working to create videos and other engagement resources is what we have been working on. We have one out there on smoke and fire detectors as, and CO detection. And we'll continue to add to those, those groups. And held numerous education workshops as discussed before and, and additional development opportunities that we can do. We're just always brainstorming and coming up with ideas and putting into action how we can keep educating the public and ourselves as we move forward. Our organizational culture, we've been working diligently, I would say, over the last couple of years, especially since COVID started. It's kind of a nice transition to go into. We have come up with some very innovative ideas of flexible schedules for the inspectors. It's not only benefited the inspection staff, but it's, it's also benefited the customer when it provides a greater degree of time from morning till after, late afternoon that inspections are available for. that inspections are available for, for the inspection staff and for the customer. It's just also to keep that retention. Keep, keep the employee happy and, and also keep them involved with this job here, what we have here at, like Burnsville University provides some opportunity to learn. And just always providing these new innovative ideas to keep employees engaged and enjoying their, their place here. Also, we have a safety program to ensure that field staff is recognized. We meet with police, fire, code enforcement, licensing, building code, and anyone else who wants to come alongside of us. And we go over some iffy or tense, intense areas that we can keep staff away from, or at least know when to go to police first and before we engage into the, the inspections on the, that community.
I'll go next. Community vibrancy, we're committed to working with developers, contractors, homeowners, landlords to maintain our building stock, both residential and commercial within the community. In our, in our world, sometimes that means redevelopment too. We foster our businesses through building relationships with our business retention and expansion efforts. And we collaborate with our partners like the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce. We work with the community and other stakeholders to imagine and plan for the future through the comprehensive plan and through other strategic plans and visions, including the economic development strategic plan and the heart of the city design framework. For infrastructure, we collaborate with our engineering and parks departments often, not only on those grant applications I'd mentioned before, but on any effort we, we can collaborate. I'll let you in on a little secret. I have a nickname. It's Rec Gina. It just, I think it shows again just how collaborative we, we can be at times. We communicate with our businesses and residents on numerous multimodal opportunities, including connecting people to services that we have in the community through MBTA services, metro mobility, DARTs, and letting them know that we're, we're working to make improvements through trails and on, on-street bike lanes. And there's certainly an intersection of what we do in planning and, and, and building and not so much code enforcement in that respect, but we, we do do a lot of collaborative, collaborative efforts with multimodal activities. Planning staff leads our development review committee, which includes staff from multiple departments, engineering, police, fire, parks, and rec, and they say engineering, our building department. And we look at creative solutions to solving infrastructure challenges on things like tenant improvements and a new and redevelopment. One of my favorite recent projects was the Capstone 35 project where there was a lot of impediments on the land, which made it difficult for any new development to occur on that site. And we worked collaboratively with not only our internal partners, but with the developer to relocate infrastructure. And we're able to also seek out grant money. And there were a lot of partners that came in, in, into play there. But now we have two new buildings under construction and, and there's a lot, a lot you can do when you, when you collaborate and have people at the table rowing in the same direction. Sustainability. We have a unique program with our building inspections department, a take-home vehicle program that allows our inspectors to take home a vehicle. But they are able to bring those vehicles back to work earlier in the morning. Instead of coming to the, straight to the office, they can go straight to their first inspection. And it, it's a retention and attraction, I think, to our staff to be able to do that. Their vehicle that they use, it's their, it's really their office. And they're able to be more efficient. And it's something innovative that other cities just don't do. And I'd say we're on the leading edge. And to be able to, to offer that is, is, I would say, an amenity to our, our, to our inspectors.
We're able to get.
Thank you.
I can interject, but we're able to get additional inspections per day. And it's, it's never less than one. It's, and if we can get to two, that's great. And that's often what happens. So it's really nice. Just opens it up for builders, homeowners. They really, really like this program so that we're available earlier and later in the day.
Again, with sustainability, one of the things that we've been able to do is support higher-density housing and accessory dwelling units. We've allowed accessory dwelling units, I think, for three or four years now. A lot of cities in the metro area, it's either not allowed or they need to apply for a conditional use permit or some special requirement. In Burnsville, as long as it meets city code setbacks, size requirements, you can pull a building permit. And this allows families to either expand onsite. Maybe it's a, an elderly parent or that needs some care, but they can be close by. Maybe it's a, children moving back home after college and want their own space. Or, or just a way to make some extra money by renting out the unit. They're able to intensify their land and, and bring up their property values. So they're using the land that's there and, and being good stewards in a sense where you don't have to expand outside. And another thing that we do is connect businesses and residents to resources, whether it's solar energy and providing them the resources they need to pull their building permits, helping to educate them on, on the benefits, our recycling programs and reuse programs that we connect people with, and grant opportunities related to those efforts.
All right. I'll close this out here thanks to Regina, Chris and Chris. So what's important to community development really boils down to, in my mind, three things. It's customer service, being responsive to the customer, enable to assist them, really engaging with the community. We want to meet, meet them where they are and really help them solve their challenges, right? And that's from neighborhoods to businesses to development, economic development, all those tools that we have. And innovation, as I told you before, or we referenced before, where we, we'll meet with people well before they have an application. And through some of the videos, through some of the programs, whether it's code cash and trying to help people, you know, we're really trying to do things differently, right? And trying to think out of the proverbial box to do things a little bit differently. When we look at our challenges, as we talked about, you see the theme there, right? We have a lot of new housing units, particularly the multifamily front with a lot under the construction currently. We have an aging housing stock. That challenges in all kinds of areas, whether it's, it's multifamily, single-family, business. All of that is a challenge to keep that vibrant. We have an increasing demand on our resources in order to maintain the level of service, really retaining our qualified workforce, just like everybody's having challenges, right? So we're trying to do everything we can to keep the very technically competent folks that we have that do a great job. And we've invested in them, want to continue to invest in them so that they stay here and continue to serve our community as well as they do. And then again, one of our challenges, Chris Fassi talked about this, is a lack of really redundancy, particularly in some of those trade areas where we really, if someone goes on vacation, we don't have another plumbing inspector. We have one. So if he's out sick, we don't have anybody. So that becomes challenging. And one of our concerns is we don't want to see the turnover of that experienced staff. We want to retain these folks that are doing a really good job because there is a limited available pool to replace them with. So we want to keep the folks we have and continue to provide, provide the high level of service. So when you look at it, we have a lot of great aspirations. We want to provide a streamlined process for minor projects. We would love for someone to come in and be able to be with a permit right there, an ability to, to review something like a deck right at the, at the counter, right? So they don't have to drop it off, wait up to a week. Like you come in and you have it, and I'll give Chris Fassi, he's got some great ideas. We can't design it for him, but he'd love to have some pre-made plans that are approved by an architect or an engineer so that we can say, if you want a 10 by 10 deck, here's a pre-made plan. You turn that in, we'll give you a permit right here, right? Really kind of breaking the, the mold of how things are done. How can we make it easier for folks to invest and keep our community vibrant? You know, how do we meet them and educate them? We want to be helpful to them. We don't want to be seen as the barrier. So again, we want to, we want to cross-certify and cross-train our staff. So we do have some of that redundancy. We want to make sure that we continue to develop robust, standard operating procedures. I know these guys are sick of me asking about documenting some of this stuff, right? I'm all about that. I want to be able to, if something happens, God forbid, we're able to continue on forward. So we want to have those things. And it also creates standard expectations. You know, we had a transition of an admin assistant in Chris Forsland's area. Thankfully, we were able to document a lot of that stuff. And that's been very helpful to have that manual. How do I issue rental licenses? What challenges do we have with that? How does the system work? So getting all those standard procedures documented from a redundancy standpoint, but also a standard expectation standpoint, so everybody's talking the same language. We're already talking 2050 comprehensive plan, if you can believe that, or thinking about it. I shouldn't say talking, but it feels like we just finished 2040. But, you know, Regina's done a good job starting to think about that. What are we going to need for resources to be able to accomplish that in a few years here? And really, this comes down to how do we maintain a self-safe and healthy rental housing stock and really a vibrant community? That's our goal as we look at community development is a vibrant community. We want this to be successful. We want the community vibrant and for us to be able to help them. So we look at, from an FTE count, we mentioned this earlier, the analysis recommends additional four FTEs. Chris Forsland mentioned this, we've, we've seen the 21%, over 21% increase in rental housing stock. We expect that to be over 11,000 rental units in the next year online. We continue to see the demand for building permits and inspections increasing. And we see the economic development strategic plan as a priority and want to continue to, to come alongside people and connect people for development and redevelopment. So we will stand for any questions. We appreciate your time and attention. We know we had a lot to go through. And again, thanks to Regina, Chris and Chris for their expertise and input on this.
Thank you. I'll go to Vince first and then Dan G.
Question for Mr. Forsland. On the increase in severity for complaints, have you noticed a correlation in that between the turnover of ownership to those larger corporate entities? Because it seems like a lot of the ones that I've personally seen have been, or at least the homes that have been in the most disrepair were rentals. And then when you dig a little deeper, they were owned by, you know, an out-of-town management company. And then do we have a clear line of communication with some of those groups, like Invitation Homes and others that have a big footprint?
To your first part of that statement, I'd say, do we have anything that's measurable out there? It would be general observances. And sometimes that's the clue to tell us that maybe a transition occurred. They don't tell us. All of a sudden, we look on the ownership and, oh, it's changed again. That may be part of it. The second part, some of them we do, some of them we don't. Some of them have been around for, since we started the program. And we have a good working relationship with them. Others, you know, we struggle with. How, how are they going to respond? Oh, somebody doesn't work here anymore. We have to start over. To maintain the contact list for all our rentals is a struggle. But yeah, that can be a problem.
And we've seen that these are shadow companies most of the time. You know, where there's five or six different investment companies and you're not even sure where to point your barometer at.
Yeah, we can be chasing our tails sometimes trying to find out, A, who they are and who the responsible party is.
But couldn't we find that out when they have to get a rental license? Because, and my question was coming around to the same, but we're tracking on the same problem. Because we have, they have to pull a rental license.
Yes and no. Yes, they need to tell us. No, they don't always pull the license till we find out sometimes. We don't know if there's a change of ownership always. That, that would, that would be more of the single-family homes.
Yeah.
And that, that's, again, we're, we're tracking literally, you know, thousands of entities out there. And as everybody knows, the market's been quite hot lately. We have a lot of things change hands sometimes within a couple of weeks. Some, you know, again, it's, it's tough.
Because Vince is right, there are a lot of corporations, and I've been made aware of that by people in different neighborhoods. And I sent some of that information to you. And you know about that. The, there are companies that are buying up homes and renting them out. So you gave a statistics that 40% of our population are in rental homes. There's a correlation. There's something happening here that we have to pay attention to. If 40% of our population are renters, then there's a correlation and there's a problem coming. Because I look at your rental licensing graph. You know, I need to understand a little bit more about that graph. And the 40% of our population are in rental homes. And all of the companies that are coming in and purchasing single-family homes and putting them up for rental. I got a complaint from people in, around the Crystal Lake area, company coming in and purchasing homes.
It's, it's happening. It's happening all over. Star Tribune, I believe, had several articles on it either last year or within the last six months about the same problem that they're having with that. So it's, it's not, it's a national phenomenon, I believe. The housing market's red hot.
I understand. Okay, Dan G.
Well, I wasn't going to talk about that part, but I'm going to now. Some of the biggest problems we've had in the city have been from the homeowners themselves. They're still in their homes, they're not renting their homes, but we're in court with them constantly trying to get things done. So I wouldn't blame everything on renters. It's, that's, I don't think that's right. I know some of these corp, I know some of these corporations don't take care of it and will be dealing with that. I know it's coming down the line at us, but just to throw it out because there's renters, there's problems that I don't think is appropriate for us to do. Because renters make up a big part of our city and they care about our city just as much as we do. That's my mind. But what I wanted to ask was, how far out are we on inspections? Years ago, we used to take a long time to get an inspection in the city. Do you know when someone wants to get something inspected, how long it takes for an inspector to get there? I'm putting in a new bathroom and waiting for inspector to come out so I can put the sheetrock back in because the plumbing electricity's done and...
It depends on the inspector.
Yep.
And especially so with electrical, as of today, we're a little over a week.
A week out?
Yep.
So I could sit there with an open bathroom for a week waiting to finish the job?
Yeah. And plumbing, that fluctuates from week to week, but it's about a week.
About a week as well.
Yep. And then we're doing pretty good with the building. And we're a little deeper in that end, but we're still waiting for the other trades. And we try to do combination as much as legally possible. So we go to the state law. We, we get very creative with that. We've, are very fortunate to have inspectors that are willing to do that. Most electrical inspectors will not, and we have one that will.
I know a couple of years back, we had this discussion and the single homes, it was more, more of some of the developers and what they were doing is they were remodeling buildings and the amount of time it took to get inspections isn't it? So they can finish out their buildings so they can even get COs on them. And it was sometimes weeks before we could get in there to let them start, you know, renting their building on them.
Chris, do you know how that compares to other communities, those wait times? Anecdotally. I know you don't have all of the data in your back pocket, but...
I know you don't have all of the data in your back pocket, but...
That we, in the busier times, we are a little further behind on some of those.
On the commercial, okay.
That hasn't improved, then?
It hasn't improved on the different times. So, in the middle of the winter, when it isn't that busy, we're on a regular schedule, we're on a full schedule, which is nice to keep us going, but we hit summer, and I have one electrical, and he goes on vacation or goes to a conference, and we're required to have, continuing, and now we have to plan ahead of time. How do we do that? He starts reaching out to the contractors way ahead of time, weeks ahead of time, months ahead of time, depending on he's going to a conference now, and I have a backup consultant, but he is completely booked also. So, in the next, I think next week, there isn't going to be any electrical inspections until he gets back from his conference, so...
BJ and Greg and Hugo, there's a model out there that's called Mutual Aid, and I'm wondering, is that a possibility with some of the inspections? Because they have to be certified. An electrical inspector, if we only have one, and then you, and then there's a plumber, and he has to be certified in his own discipline area. Can we do something where we leverage resources with other communities so we can help each other out? I don't know if that's a possibility, whether there are restrictions by law, but, I mean, because it is. I've had people call and says, you know, it's been four weeks and I haven't had an inspector out, but then come to find out someone is sick so that you don't have anybody to go out and do that inspection. So, the people are waiting.
Oh.
So, but I don't know. Yeah, BJ.
I mean, it's something we can look into. I think there, there's some challenges with it, depending on, again, it's going to be depending on the building type, because the things like the delegation of authority are by person, so...
Yeah.
Like, school, certain things, only certain inspectors can work on, so in our city. So, some of that is delegation, some of that is trade-specific, and I would tell you that most of the communities around us are feeling the same pinch because they're extremely busy, so they don't necessarily have a lot of capacity, but it's, I mean, it's not that we can't ask, I just don't know that there's a lot of capacity laying out there.
But it's a problem that we've had for a long time.
Yep, and it speaks to the depth challenge, right? I mean, that's, it's, it really is a challenge, and, you know, we've tried to do everything, like you said, with the combination inspections, with a number of our inspectors being also certified as building officials so that they have the ability to do many of these inspections. So, we've tried to maximize everything we can. I think we do pretty good keeping it around that one week, but there is challenges when you have a single person for a single trade, no doubt.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I do reach out for that to see if we can do some sort of under memorandum of understanding or some sort of joint authority.
Something that you all can take a look at and find out if it's a possibility, because I hear what the chief is saying. You know, I don't know. I don't know if all of the inspectors under the different disciplines, whether it's plumbing, electrician, et cetera, are they in a union?
No.
And if not...
Well, Mary, I think it's a, I think it's a good set of questions. I would say that operationally, it's our commitment to review our standards, to identify how we can most effectively ensure that our staff are well-equipped to deliver service to the community. At the end of the day, that's my bottom line. We've talked a lot about during our transition in community development and throughout the organization about our role in providing responsible and responsive service to the community, and these are all questions that we need to continue to work through as a department, I think, as the department has new leadership and is more appropriately resourced. These are questions that we can answer. I would also, just anecdotically caution the council about stepping into the suggestion of sharing services across our organization.
And that's why I said you look into it. You know, that's operations. We're getting, we're just been told about, you know, some challenges and what are the aspirations. So, I addressed it to BJ and you.
Absolutely.
It's operational tactics. That's your domain, and you do that, yeah.
One last question. The four FTEs you're looking for, is that to increase your depth into those areas?
I would speak a little bit to that, as we haven't slotted exactly which ones which year, but yes, that will definitely help on the building side with some depth on some of the, at least a trade.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, I know you have some issues and some problems in community development that you have to address, so it'll be interesting to take a look at, but it is an issue. Kara, you have any comments or questions?
No. No, thank you.
Okay, Dan, Kay? No. But I know that you also received an email with regard to inspections and a building that needed to be inspected, and nobody showed, and that might have to do with depth, but it also, if I remember correctly, in asking that question, it had to do with somebody being sick and being out, and there was no redundancy. So, some of the issues that you all have to take a look at.
I think a week is better than what we heard the last time we had this discussion. It was more like two and three weeks in a month at one point. It was, it was...
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, so I think we're doing a lot better in the construction industry right now. A one-week delay is probably the least of their concerns.
Yeah.
And I would say that that's reflective of the hard work that's gone in on the part of our staff to address that level of responsiveness. It's important to them, it's important to you, it's important to the community. As a guy who built a house in another community, it's important to individuals and very stressful, and that's something that we take very seriously in terms of, no matter what the interaction is, that it's important for us to create the type of experience that's reflective of who we say that we want to be.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Nicely done. And thank you, Regina, and Chris, and Chris.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you being here. Okay. City manager, you want to tee up?
We have one more presentation conversation, Mayor, Council, and that is our city clerk's function.
Very representative of the clerk's function that you were just multitasking, bringing up your own presentation to start our conversation tonight.
I closed my computer so I can look at my notes anyway.
Oh, I do. Don't eat them all. I know there's quite a few.
Michelle?
Yes.
You're on deck, because they're just going to continue to get something to eat.
I understand. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. Last but not least, city clerk's office. Glad to wrap this up, and I'll try to make this a little quicker than some departments. All right, we're going to go ahead and talk about the city clerk's office. Really, we kind of end up being a catch-all, right? Because we catch things that come from the public, we catch things that come from the other, from departments to departments, and we can be a resource for things like, what's the statute for this, what's the policy for that, or what's our past practice at the city? We have three and a half FTE, we have two and a half are part of our budget. One is being proposed, and that is currently the deputy city clerk position that's filled by Erica Henderson. Little bit about what we do, all things council meetings. So, that includes preparing everything for your agenda packets, making sure that that's disseminated to the council, to the public, other interested parties. We also do the things after the council meeting, executing resolutions, proclamations, ordinances, updating the city code. We have a new program called MuniCode that is a self-publishing codification program. We used to have to send ordinances out to our codifier and wait for them to update our website and wait for them to update our city code, and now that's something that we do in-house. It saves the city quite a lot of money, and specifically, it was motivated by the Code Review Task Force because the project of updating the city code from that project was going to cost about approximately $30,000 to start with. So, this process actually brought that in-house, more work for my staff, but we can maintain it. If there's a typo in there, we can get it corrected. We don't have to wait for somebody else to do that. So, that was really, I think, a good improvement on our part. When we talk about council meetings, Greg was giving me a hard time about how many minutes there were in the council packet tonight, and I told him that it's his fault because I think Greg is setting some records on how many meetings we can have in a year.
Sorry, Michelle, and everyone else.
We also do licensing, business licensing, and, you know, that's liquor, tobacco, massage, resellers, gambling, those types of things, processing the applications, and we also have the new gov, open gov system for that, and that has improved that process quite a bit. We also do all the appeals. So, if somebody gets a license denial, if they get a license violation, if they, or if they have a code violation of some sort, those are all things that we process the appeal applications for. We set up the public, or the hearing, schedule the hearings for the appellant's and get everything processed for them, and that can be a long, drawn-out process. I think that this council has seen one that went through the entire appeal process and then came to the council to appeal afterward, but luckily, we don't typically get to that point. Elections, of course, is a big part of what we do. Coordinate the polling places, there are 17 polling places in Burnsville. Election judges, typically about 250 election judges for a general election cycle. Publications, community engagement. We have to assist the candidates as they're going through their process. As you run for office, you're going to get emails from me asking about your campaign finance reports and those types of things. We also help voters with, what are the options for voting? If they can't make it to their polling place on election day, you can apply online, we can mail you an absentee application ballot, those types of things. We have the 87 poll pads now that we administrate to help assist with checking in voters at our polls, and we also use something called Election Judge Dashboard. A few years ago, we did win an award for that project that we coordinated, that now it really helps administrate the whole election judge process. We provide a lot of administrative support to the city council, to the city manager, sometimes to other departments if needed. It's, we handle the complaints and concerns that come into the city council's voicemail and email inbox and make sure that those get to you as appropriate, make sure that they get to appropriate staff as needed so that they're aware that there's a complaint out there. We also do a lot of conference and travel registrations and those types of things. For the records management, we do serve as the city's responsible authority for overseeing public data requests and maintain the documents. We have like laser fiche software that helps maintain our electronic records, but then there are also records in other types of software that we can help people with the maintenance of those, and of course, there's always paper records still out there. Boards and commissions, we help coordinate the terms of them, make sure everybody's got the right terms assigned to them. The recruitment, the interview process and that type of thing, who's on deck. And then, the Code Review Task Force has been recently added that does take up quite a bit of our staff time. We looked and we have clocked 638 hours for the Code Review Task Force so far, and that's hopefully everybody remembering to put their hours in when they, when they worked on that for an hour here or a half hour there. With licensing, one of the things that we were noticing is that we were getting a lot of massage licensing, so we did a quick survey to see how we were doing in comparison to some other cities, and it looked like we were right at the top until about 4:25 today when Egan finally got back to us, and they did outpace us by six additional massage licenses. The reason it took them so long to get back to us was because we found out that their city clerk didn't do massage licensing. They, that went through their police department, so we were asking the wrong people for the In comparison sake, we did not add Minneapolis on here, but we actually did get a response from them, and they have 178 massage licenses.
101?
178.
And they're also much bigger.
They're much bigger, yes.
Yes.
Service delivery, community engagement, we have been really striving to improve our community engagement. One of the things we did this year was advertise for our public accuracy test. Now, we've always been required to put a legal notice in the paper for our public accuracy test, but this year, we took out two, a half-page ad in the paper for two separate weeks to try to get the public involved, and we also reached out more to our election judges, encouraging them to come, and we ended up with about 30 members of the public showing up, and we ended up with the Secretary of State for the first time showing up at one of our public accuracy tests.
When I went, there were only five of us.
And they were all election judges that were there to help, to help, yes. So, this is the first time we've actually had people from the public that we didn't already invite there to help facilitate the process. So, that I thought was good, considering it was our first try at this with the public. I'm glad that we did that and we got some public participation. We got the Code Review Task Force, of course. We're about a little over a year into the process with the Code Review Task Force, and we are still at the end of Title III. We have 11 titles, and I know Titles 10 and 11 are going to the planning commission, but still, we're worried about the, about how fast this is going, but, you know, we are also very proud of the fact that our task force members are very diligent about taking their responsibilities at heart, and when we say, we want you to simplify, make this easier for our residents to understand, remove any unnecessary barriers, they are actually taking that to heart and really asking some of those tough questions, is do we really need this? Or can we reword this? And sometimes, we get some of that statutory legal speak, and it's not easy to get around that and still make things clear and simple to understand. We have the new open gov system that started last year. You may have heard from community development, all of our licensing goes through that process, so we're really pleased with how that is working out for being able to provide a completely online process for some people where they can go on, apply for the license, pay for it, it can get approved and issued all completely online without having to step foot in City Hall.
That'd be awesome.
Little bit of an evolution of how elections has been going. In 2010, absentee voted expanded from 30 days to 45 days, so that's a 50% increase in how long we offered absentee voting. These are changes at the state level, of course. In 2016, we, we started to have that what's called in-person direct balloting, or people call it early voting, right? Where you get to put the ballot right into the ballot counter, and that increased our, increased from our absentee voting from like 10% to about 25 to 27% on average. In 2018, we implemented the new poll pads, and that increases staff demands for, not only for maintaining and updating these machines, but also for training for all of our election judges. Instead of having to have a two-hour training session, now you also have to have a two-hour... Instead of having to have a two-hour training session, now you also have to have a two-hour poll pad training. So it basically doubled our training, actually more than doubled because we can't have them all in one room at one time.
And with that, you also test all of your election equipments?
Yep, that's all in there too, yep. In 2020, we've got a new presidential nominating primary that would happen in March. And some people don't realize, if we have a presidential nominating primary in March, that means we start absentee voting in January. So that makes for an entire year with very little time off of elections. And in 2022, then we go through the redistricting and we have to reset our precinct boundaries so that they align with the new legislative districts so that, also so that we try to maintain the integrity of the boundaries that we can so that less people have to find a new polling place. And also, we need to try to maintain a certain balance. We don't want some very large precincts and some very small ones. As far as our staffing is concerned, in 2006, we had three FTEs. In 2000, and I started in 2005, and I think they had a slightly different model right before I started, so.
I'm going to say, oh, made up the three. So it was you, oh, and Tina, because that was under you.
Tina and Vicki.
Yeah, and Vicki, yeah, okay.
In 2011, the Elections and Licensing Coordinator position was eliminated and licensing was relocated to the Police Department. And so we were down to two FTEs. In 2012, we changed what was once just a Senior Admin Assistant and converted that into a Deputy Clerk slash Executive Assistant to the City Manager position. And to then, and that stayed unchanged until 2020, or actually still unchanged. In 2020, we integrated the licensing back into the city clerk's office and also added the front desk operations. And then, not too long after that, in November of the same year, the Community Engagement Department was up and running and they did take over the front desk operations at that time. In 2021, we added the Temporary Deputy Clerk to support licensing, code review, MUNICODE, those things. And so we now are at two and a half full-time E plus the one temporary position. We have probably five for primary and 15 for general election. But once, one other difference that has come about over the years is we used to have many four, six, sometimes volunteers. We're down to one volunteer. So that's something that kind of COVID did away with. And we have only had one come back after COVID. Absentee voting over the years has transformed into something we never expected it with the advent of all those different, the longer absentee periods, the early in-person voting, the push for COVID to vote early by absentee or mail ballot or in-person. We've seen it rise over the years. The cost of absentee voting has skyrocketed. In 2010, it cost the city about $65,000. In 2016, it cost the city about $107,000. In 2020, it cost us over $200,000. Luckily, we had about $40,000 of that was reimbursed by the state because it was for the presidential nominating primary. And we did get money back for that, but we don't know if that's a guaranteed refund to us every year. We do have to submit for it and hopefully get it. And they don't, do not cover all costs. There are certain costs that they cover.
I think that's an important place to pause, Michelle. And your timeline did a nice job of kind of comparing the evolution of elections in the city of Burnsville to our staffing model and this slide to the absentee voting reality. But the fact of the matter is, the addition of, in 2021, of that temporary FTE was not only the project and licensing realities that we're facing, it also is about changing the way that we plan for and build a sustainable and reliable staffing model moving into what elections are going to look like in the state of Minnesota. And to your earlier point, as much as I would love to trust our friends at the state to provide things like reimbursement to the community, frankly...
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed. So I think it's important for us to not only recognize that that responsibility is increasing, but this is the single largest touch point that we have with our community. It's one of the most essential services that we provide. And the way that we staff for it, the way that we budget for elections is going to need to evolve. It's just the reality that we face. It's not, it is no longer an every-other-year proposition. It's a, it's an every-year proposition and it depends on the year, how many resources and how much we're putting in certain places to address the community's needs. And I'll also say, and then I'll get off my soapbox, I'll also say that I believe very strongly that our community's engagement and participation, not only in, not only at Election Day, up to and into Election Day, but things like participation in the public accuracy test, I think is not only fantastic, but also very reflective of the interest that our community has in the important work that we do to maintain safe, secure elections in Burnsville through the state and with our, with our partners at the county. So that, that work just can't be, the importance of that work can't be underestimated as we look to the future.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah.
We'll move on to some strategic priorities. We've got safety. A lot of this has to do with our licensing function. But I also feel like safety involves the security integrity of our election equipment. We've always done this, but at this point in time, the scrutiny around election integrity, election security, and ensuring election accuracy has been to a point where we are getting questions about this on a regular basis. With community engagement, we've really seen an increase in community engagement this year. We talked about the public accuracy test. We also have an election Q and A at the library on September 22nd, which is the night before absentee voting starts for the general election. And we're hoping that people who have questions about voting and how to vote in Burnsville will come and ask us those questions. One of the things about our department that I really am proud of is that we don't just send somebody away when they call us and ask us something that we don't do or we don't know. The fact that we will stop and take the time to redirect somebody and make sure they're going to the right place, make sure that they're getting the right phone number, make sure we're not sending them on a wild goose chase, it's something that I take a lot of pride in because I have people, sometimes they call me and say, "I've been sent to three different places and they told me to come to you." And of course, if it's something that's happened, is handled at the county or something else, there's not much that I can do to help them. But I can make sure that the next person they talk to is the right person. And sometimes I can even make sure that they get directly sent to that person at the county or someplace else. Or maybe it's a DMV office if they're looking for a death certificate or something like that. But it's something that I'm really proud and I think that we do a good job of engaging with the community. Organizational culture. I really like our organizational culture that, and how it has been evolving. Like I said, we do act as a resource for a lot of different people and provide a lot of different administrative support for different areas. We also do research, like a couple of weeks ago, somebody from the Communications Department said they needed proof that we owned the ICE Center. And so that's, you know, it's not like we have a deed showing that we own the ICE Center. So I had to go back and find the deed for where we purchased the land that eventually became Civic Center Park that eventually the ICE Center was built upon. And that was actually proof enough to let that go through. But it, you know, when you, it's like, where do you find some of these things? It's, the name of the land has changed hands and the name of the plat has changed and everything has changed over the years. So it's something that, that we can do in our office that, you know, it may be harder for somebody from a different department to do.
And you found out that we bought the land from the school district?
No.
We didn't?
Uh-uh.
Who did we buy the land from?
I don't have one. Pop quiz, and I failed that one.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah, I thought we bought it from the school district. The school district bought it from the Nichols family.
I have a deed, I'll show you tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right. Community vibrancy. I think that the new Open Gov. system and being able to have those completely online processes makes things a lot easier for our businesses to access. And we also help facilitate the Community Builder Award nominations, the volunteer recognition events we help with. Infrastructure, we have a lot of records management and yes, a lot of it is in our Laserfish. But we also have to make sure we maintain the records in, with the help of the IT department, of course, but in Laserfish. But there's other software programs that we also have to maintain records in, and paper, paper still exists and that still sometimes does need to be maintained. We talk about the community access to public information. We have a Gov QA system where people can, at any time of day, go online and request public information. So sometimes they request not public information and we have to be aware of the statutes that govern that information. For sustainability, we're working on using less paper all the time. We actually are using a new process for the accepting and rejecting of absentee ballot, for our absentee ballot board that creates less paper to start with by using, leveraging our electronic systems. And thanks to the IT department for giving us some extra laptops to do that with. We also help people participate in online council meetings, like with the Zoom administration that we do. We currently have no one on Zoom participating in this meeting, but we did have someone at our regular council meeting earlier tonight, even though they did not want to say anything to us. All right, talking about our challenges, this picture is a picture of two of our election judges, one on each side, and then someone from the public actually watching them as they explain to them how they conduct the public accuracy test. One of our main concerns is we have a lot more voters that have so many concerns about the election process and the election security, making sure that things are done accurately. And so we really are pleased to see that people are getting involved in finding out more about this. We have increased interest in absentee and early voting, which has significantly increased in the last 12 years. Extended timeline and staff time. We expected the Code Review Task Force to last about 18 to 24 months. We are seeing that it's going to be likely a full 24 months and that it requires a lot more of my staff ti, my staff's time to complete the rewrites to ensure the consistency from chapter to chapter regarding appeal language and those types of things. Otherwise, we could end up with a code at the end that didn't look consistent. Increase in licensing activities and things like new legislation with THC. Increase in number and length of council meetings also that takes up more time with staff for preparing packets, minutes, and attending meetings. Our aspirations, we want to be more proactive, more proactive with addressing any election administration needs, promote transparency, inclusion, not just in elections, but in everything we do that commission recruitment. Maybe not everybody's aware that they could apply for these commissions. And one of the things we do, we've always done is like, if somebody applies for a commission and doesn't get on, we also let them know there are other volunteer opportunities in the city. You can, you might be interested in MBN, or maybe you'd be interested in serving as an election judge or something to that effect where you could, there are other opportunities just because you don't have one opportunity. There are other opportunities to be engaged with the city. And the city clerk's office is at this point 2.5. We do have 3.5 with the one temporary in our office now, and that is what we are hoping to stay at. We see, these are, our observations are the increase in, in early voting and absentee voting. Our city manager is without a dedicated executive assistant. Megan serves as both Deputy City Clerk and Executive Assistant to the City Manager. And I can tell you that during election time, Greg doesn't get a lot of support from our office, but we try. If something, if that person is gone, then the rest of my department is trying to back up that executive assistant position as well. And increasing demands and complexity in licensing and data requests. Stand for any questions?
Any questions?
I have no questions, but I would like to make a comment. If this is hiring on Erica, then personally, I think it's a no-brainer. I got to work with her on the Planning Commission. She's very good at what she does and highly intelligent, very charismatic, obviously a good addition to our team. And so I, two thumbs up.
I agree.
Having worked with Erica on the Code Review, she's invaluable to us. And if we don't have someone there, that could go a lot longer than it should. And quite frankly, I'm starting to be a little concerned about fatigue of our commissioners themselves, the amount of time they have to put in this, and the years of commitment they have to put into this. Some are okay, some of them would like to get this done as quickly as possible.
Yeah, with the licensing back in the city clerk's office, I agree with you. Erica is invaluable. She, she has a master's in public administration. She is very diligent and thoughtful. I've listened to her when people call with regard to licensing and how she addresses it in a very kind and compassionate way, but also very clear as to what they need to do.
Her and I met for lunch so she could take notes on how to be the Chair of the Planning Commission. She was that invested in making sure that she did it right that, I don't know why she asked me for advice, but...
Well, because you have the experience.
Yeah, she was looking for the "don't do it."
What did you do, Vince?
Okay, don't do that.
I do think, for as much as I've promised all of our directors and staff that I wouldn't make examples out of specific people, thank you for your comments about Erica. She's added tremendous value to the clerk's office. I will also say that the addition of that position in a temporary capacity was purely a matter of our policy and the way that we budget. The position is essential to moving not only the clerk's office forward, but frankly, the support that we provide to the council and the community in some of our most important areas. So thank you for that feedback. I'll also say that, you know, one of the things that we've done is just try to sacrifice where we can to make sure things like elections, code review, the list goes on, are successful. And one of those things has been any sort of support for, any sort of organized support for my position. And that has no reflection on our current incumbent staff. They're fantastic. It has every, it has everything to do with, with just the amount of resources that have gone into elections, particularly since I, since I've been part of the organization the past three years. There's been a lot of evolution. And frankly, we've just had to relieve certain staff members' time by organizing my calendar and keeping me honest to the commitments that I have in order to provide those services to the community. So one of the things that you have seen and that we've talked about in your budget and Michelle mentioned it here, is I'm asking the council to include a full-time executive assistant or assistant to the city manager, which is very reflective of other communities of our size in order to help me continue to be effective and to not take away from some of the other important functions that are happening in the clerk's office. So certainly happy to talk more about that suggestion, but just in an abundance of clarity with the council that is included, my recommended budget.
And Greg, I still feel like it's something that needs to be there because you don't have, we don't have anybody cross-trained. have, we don't have anybody cross-trained also. So if you have a full-time executive assistant, then that would be somebody that not only we could help train into that position, but we could, we could be cross-trained to assist when that person was on vacation. So you wouldn't be left without anyone.
Absolutely. And vice versa, can be cross-trained in the clerk's function and other areas of the organization to provide, to provide support. So there, there is a, an efficiency and an effectiveness component in my mind to, to that.
Well, we have also directed you, and, and we all agreed from, at the first all-day work session, more transparency, which puts a lot of added activity to your workload and how all of that, and the reporting that you're doing is more than ever. But Michelle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you have two half-time people because Megan isn't working full-time.
Megan is full-time.
Is full-time, but she hasn't been working full-time? Or has, has?
It's a, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that, that we have two, we have one deputy city clerk executive assistant that is a full-time FTE. There is a second deputy clerk that is the temporary FTE, and then there's an administrative clerk that is a half-time FTE in the department.
Just saying. Somebody's been sick a lot.
There, there certainly are. In any number of areas that we talked about tonight, from building code to, to what have you, there are certainly areas where, where we have to get creative.
Sure.
With how we, we manage workloads.
Yeah. Okay. Any comments? Questions? Okay. Michelle, to you and your team, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of that. And if there are no other questions, any comments, then without objection, we stand adjourned by acclamation.
I'd like one comment before you adjourn.
Okay.
I want to wish my wife a happy anniversary.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-six years today.
Yes.
Actually spent some time.
I'm sure she watched this whole meeting too.
Yeah.
She hangs on every word.
Happy anniversary.
Yeah, happy anniversary. With that and without objection.
Sitting there with a glass of champagne.
Yeah. We stand adjourned.
Champagne is now within the class, I can promise you.
Mayor, I found the deed.
Hey, is the Mac, is?